Yeah, don't know the whole.
Let's call the meeting in order. Kathy, please do the roll call.
Mrs. Frisco?
Here.
Mrs. Tunny? Mrs. Oost? Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Here.
Okay, we're all here in the quorum, so please stand for the pledge. Uh, okay. We will move on. Public communications will be the first thing. We just have one, so Amanda Montgomery.
Hi, I'm Amanda Montgomery. Um, I just wanted to, one, read part of the oath of office that I believe most of you have taken. I think it's applicable. That part is, I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. Um, the other thing that I would like to urge you guys to do is consider external options for interim period for superintendent. I think a pair of fresh eyes within our district is probably the best option at this point. Um, and I don't know everyone in the audience too, contrary to belief, not everyone is my friend. Um, I know there's a lot of hearsay going on, and I do not appreciate it as well. Um, so please remember your oath. Please consider external options, and this is about our kids. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Sorry for the people in the audience. Let me start that over again. Okay, so we're gonna follow up on last week's meeting. Um, where, uh, we started, we started the search. Uh, we had three homework assignments. Had IASB, followed IASB, so that Illinois Association of, Illinois Association of School Boards. So it's our main kind of contact that we have, the free resource. Um, we're assigned to rep each read. Oh, but has a consulting firm and part of one wings of the consulting firm is a search practice for interims and full-time searches. Uh, and then I was going to, um, follow up with our three internal candidates that are superintendent um, on that front. So, we're going to first kind of just summarize what um, uh, opinion, and I'm just one of seven, but try to get a sense of what the population could be at this moment in time. I mean, sitting here at May 29th, uh, June 30th, uh, which is technically June 28th, because that's Friday, um, on the work summer hours, so maybe June 27th, um, would be Dr. Cohen's last day at the district. So that's about a month away from now. So that is rapidly approaching if we're gonna find somebody. So, uh, to fill in with no gap, uh, in superintendent. So, with that said, uh, I don't know, Anna, can I kick it off? For you?
Okay, um, first I, um, wanna thank, um, Mark for, for continuing to give his support. Um, I, I know that he's here until the end of June, but, um, he's assisting in this process, so I appreciate him, uh, doing that. Um, I, um, along with Kelly, um, she expressed interest in listening to the IASB. We spoke with Carmen, um, Ayala, um, who is a former superintendent of the state superintendent with IASB, and, um, we had a long conversation with her. And I summarize this in, in two ways. So for an interim search, um, the IASB has a list of interim candidates, um, that, that they have already offered. People that are, um, interested. We have, uh, five people, um, and we got a sixth today uh, that was on the list. That wasn't previously included because the distance the person would have to, uh, travel. Um, most of the people on the list are retired superintendents with successful careers. So if you did ta- have a chance to look at any of the resumes, this is what they like to do. Um, they like to be interim superintendents. Um, so she gave that, um, those folks uh, as potential external candidates for an interim, um, and those are candidates that, um, we can discuss when it's appropriate. The second piece of my homework was, um, the permanent search, and the permanent search, um, she forwarded the menu of services and the professional services contract for that. Um, if you had a chance to look at that, um, the base agreement um, is eighty-four hundred dollars, which includes, uh, uh, most of the, the services. And that eighty-four hundred does not include options, um, that are fifteen hundred dollars each. Options include like stakeholder input, holding, um, um, a forum for stakeholders to provide their input, similar to what we did in the last, um, search. So a base, uh, plus one option of the stakeholder input would be, um, nine thousand nine hundred dollars, um, unless we select additional options. So, um, that is in, is what I have for today. If you, if, Kelly, since you were on that call, um, is there anything that you wanted to share, um, about the general information first?
Um, so just to reiterate, and see some, uh, someone missed the last, uh, meeting. Did you model for an outside superintendent, uh, fund this pool of candidates would be, um, because they are retired and they've entered into that retirement phase of their pension, um, they're, uh, maxed out at a hundred and twenty work days per year, which is not near enough, um, so that was the whole school year. And so, um, what district started to do was have a team of superintendent and fill an interim position. And, um, some of these candidates have, and I don't know these specific candidates, I'm just saying, some candidates have teamed up multiple times, and they're kind of getting used to working, uh, with each other.
I, I'm not sure. It doesn't.
Um, so, uh, it could be two people working together, uh, and typically, potentially a model would be like, uh, two to three days, and then two to three days, you know, the next week, and they just kind of alternate. So they're, they're here throughout the school year, but not at any point working, uh, the full. So, uh, that would be the potential, and then, but also will be potential is to do something where if we were to do one project from the outside, uh, feasibly, we can have one interim from a cool external candidate and potentially come to an interim, uh, sorry, internal person to help cover the, the workload that is not covered by the hundred and twenty day, uh, max. So that is, uh, one thing for, for this full candidate. And then, um, and like Julie said, these people are experienced. I think, um, Dr. Carmen has some really good advice for us. Um, essentially, these people have, you know, long, uh, history of, of being that, uh, superintendent for the useful from the business perspective, um, and, you know, budgeting and, and that kind of, uh, side of what we need, uh, superintendent to do. So, um.
Thanks, Kelly.
I have a question. So of the six candidates, how many have of those six have worked together? That, that, you know, if, if we go around of two because of the hundred and twenty day requirement, have any of the six, do we know, work together?
I can follow up and get that answer for you.
Okay. And these, and these candidates are pre-screened through them?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's an important point. As I, uh, there's one thing that we asked, you know, I, what I asked Dr. Carmen was, pretend like I'm a superintendent and I retire, and, and I decide that I want to go back to work in a interim capacity. Do I just send you my resume to get out of the list for their workload, um, by eight, three? And, and they're, so they do that, candidates, she, you know, she has, she has full confidence in candidates, and that candidates are available is, is not any indication on their ability, but more so like, I think how IASB, what geographic area they're willing to work in. And that's why we got the, uh, the last, the last candidate, I would say, yesterday. Because he was, he didn't put this area, so she wasn't in that pool originally, but then he found out about, uh, he said, you know, what gets in, in the queue. But, um, but it's strictly on what they're saying to areas they wanna work. So whether or not an interim job pops up in that area is kind of what they're, what they're waiting for.
Any other?
Sorry, one more point. So there's the cost that you were talking about, Julie. That is solely for the permanent placement position. Not, there's no cost.
Correct.
You got the resumes, you would just contact, um, these people and add them to the, the candidates that we potentially will interview for the, for syndrome, but there's no cost in IASB, kind of low on that.
Correct.
Okay, three is good. Uh, okay, any other questions on IASB? Okay. Um, you know, in a closed session, you can discuss individual candidates and stuff. All right, Anna, do you want to go with, or do you want me to go?
I can go.
Okay.
All right, so I did speak with Dr. White, um, and we, those of us who know Dr. White know he's very thorough, um, and for a comprehensive search process, of course, it's very detailed. Um, and he gave, I, I handed you guys all out his, uh, his comprehensive search processes. Um, and we go through a profile of successful candidate electronic survey from EDLS, um, where the survey will be shared with the board, chosen, the parents, key business leaders, and selected community members. Uh, the draft will be a starting point, and EDLS will collaborate through the board president to create final survey. Uh, EDLS will coordinate the survey creation and collection of anonymous submissions. And EDLS is, uh, they're the name of the company, educate, the shortened educational leadership solutions. Um, EDLS will create a comprehensive electronic survey report that can be used as one source of data for the board to create the profile of a successful candidate. Then they will go on to a profile of, of successful candidates, and EDLS will work with the board to finalize the profile. Then we go on, we'll go on to preliminary search and screening processes, where they will see qualified candidates, manage all application processes, conduct preliminary interviews, and present a slate of, of candidates to the board. Uh, interview questions would be next. EDLS will provide the board with a set of interview questions that is aligned to the desired qualities of a successful candidate. This can include up to two sets of questions, should the board conduct two rounds of questions. An interview rating electronic system. EDLS will create an electronically submitted interview rating system to be used by individual board members, and should the board request it, other team members during the interview process, e.g. parents and employees. The questions will be aligned with the final desired qualities of a successful candidate. The rating submissions will be anonymous and will be compiled to assist the board with selections of candidates that are called back if the board desires a second round of interviews. This will require each interviewer to have their own Chromebook or laptop so that each individual interviewer can submit one rating per candidate in a timely manner. The comprehensive interview data report can typically be available within twenty-four hours after the last interview during the each round. If we go optional interim search, the cost provided below includes activities for EDLS to assist with the search for an interim superintendent. This process may include, but may not be limited to EDLS seeking qualified candidates and setting up one or more interviews with the board and selected available candidate. Additional details will be provided in a formal proposal and will be based on information shared with, with Dr. Zabulka. Um, so the proposed cost, uh, to this would be fifteen-nine. And some expenses may occur if we are to bring in others, um, to, to help with the process. It could be up to a thousand, but, uh, talking to Dr. White, he said three, four hundred dollars. Probably be more than likely, but they go on the higher end. Um, and most important, one last note. Uh, I am sure you understand, given the time of the year and the current market for finding highly qualified candidates, developing a comprehensive search calendar is of utmost importance, especially if the board would like us to support your work to find an interim. So, what, whatever we decided to do, we let them know, and we'll go from there.
So fifteen? Sorry.
No, no, I just, you know, um, of course, we, we had a lot more discussion, and you can talk about, um, in a closed session too. So, uh, but this is basically how they would set up a, um, a comprehensive search for us.
Just, I'm, I'm aware, or just to clarify.
Yes.
So this comprehensive search process, that's fifteen thousand nine hundred. It's, uh, additional expenses of potential to a thousand. That's for the full-time
Yes.
search, okay? And he said that the, uh, the optional interim search, they'd have to work up a quote. Do we know how quickly they could get a quote?
Well, I think they could get it right away if we shout around and ask them to, to do it.
All right.
Looks like it's included.
This is included.
Yeah.
Like, we have to commit.
Says include.
That the interim is included, it's
Yeah.
commit to having them, uh, provide a comprehensive search for a permanent.
The cost provided below includes activities for EDLS to assist with the search for interim superintendent.
Right, okay.
So they don't, it's all.
There's no additional, but I guess the question would be, if we're not ready to commit on, on the long term, you know, short term, interim, what would the cost, if, if that's even an option, for them to do just that for a while?
Or, or just interim?
So it's fifteen-nine, all-in?
Right, all-in.
For the search, and then you, you kind of get it as a bonus, you get the interim search. So I think what we'd say is, hey, if you just do the interim, start with that, and then say they charge us like, I don't know, I've seen this in my line of work. They charge us two thousand for that, but then you get the two thousand other credit towards that fifteen-nine.
Right.
At the end of day, it's all
Right.
Fifteen-nine's the most you pay for everything. So then, that way, they're covered for their expenses, for their time, if we decide to go with another
And I believe he said.
full-time search firm, but then if we don't, then it's just, it would've been included, makes sense, kind of?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that's, that, I think that'd be the question that I'd have for, for them, is that, you know, if we do that, because obviously they're gonna be wanting compensated for their time, um, but how, how does that work if we put that route?
Okay, we can finish it out.
Anna, did, did Dr., um, did Dr., what did you, any expectations that, like, this, this pool of people, that you have? People that, you know, that are looking for those kind of, for, for the interim, that's the cost.
Oh, yes.
Please.
Thank you, Anna. You're welcome.
Sorry, take a minute. Uh, okay, um, so that, any, any other questions for Anna? On that, on that, uh, okay, all righty. So my job was to interview the, or, uh, but, uh, talk to our three internal, uh, candidates. Um, I say, I keep saying candidates, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're, they, we want to be candidates or that they are candidates. Uh, but I had a discussion with all three that are eligible, um, on that front, and we can, um, discuss further, you know, the pros and cons of that, I think, in a closed session, as far as internal, external. Um, but I did have a chance to discuss with all three of those. Um, interesting enough that, um, I also, um, was alerted to a potential candidate, um, by a teacher, actually, um, and our board attorney of, uh, superintendent that is, um, retiring early at the end of this year, um, does not, is not looking to pull a pension, TRS, uh, for the next school year. So this individual is an experienced superintendent, um, eleven years superintendent experience. But because this candidate is not going to, um, pull from TRS pension system, this, uh, candidate, uh, is not, um, restricted by that hundred and twenty day work requirement. So this external candidate could actually, um, work full-time for us. Um, so I can do some more details on that. I apologize. I literally got off the phone with this candidate, um, expressing an interest at about eleven-thirty this morning, and then work got a little crazy, and I was stuck on some fire drills. So, um, but yeah, so I can discuss, you know, further this candidate, but this candidate does not, um, uh, this candidate actually has a connection to the district, knows the district, um, but eleven years of superintendent experience, and it would be considered an external candidate. So, with that said, and because they came from, you know, some references, that, that would be free as well, if we went that route with that candidate. Um, there's no one that's saying, they're saying, hey, I find a seat for the district. You know, uh, John Prestor's not gonna say that, and I doubt the teacher's gonna say that either. So, um, anyway, so, uh, so it sounds like, I can sum things up. We have six potential candidates from IASB that we need to discuss. Um, Dr. White's firm potentially has some candidates, but we have no one at this moment that we can discuss tonight, um, on that front. Um, then we'll discuss the three internal, uh, candidates, and then this other candidate that I, that came up today. Um, so that would put it at, uh, ten, I believe, if my math is right, um, Dr. White's firm. So, um, any other discussion thoughts we want to share on that?
Kelly, your mic, I, I got an email. Your mic isn't working, so if you.
Um, so I would like to propose the board get some kind of calendar established. I think, um, you know, this is reiterated in Don White's email. I was just reading about this, um, you know, the urgency, the, the, the schedule, you know, people's got, uh, everybody's got stuff to do. And I think that, um, we should try to get a calendar established and maybe start, and this is not my idea. This was, I, I spoke with Dr. Cohen, um, in depth. I appreciate, Mark, your time, um, on, on insight into this process and your thoughts and, and, um, the, the things that are on the docket that need to kind of get covered and transitions. Um, but as far as a, a schedule of what the board's work will be over the next month and kind of covering this, can we, um, I think Jim brought up last time, which I think was a really good idea, is, you know, maybe we stick with the Wednesday thing, but either way, I think it would be helpful for us to look at the calendar, figure out what our goal is to get this done by, and then maybe backtrack and, uh, figure out how many meetings realistically we would need to do. Um, and, you know, another potential is not to say that anything about the, sorry to blindside you, Julie, on this, but we have a, a policy committee meeting scheduled over the next couple of weeks. And, you know, could we use that time as, as, uh, something the board is already pointing to be here? How many more meetings do we need? You get, you get my point.
Um, so, so really quick, on that follow-up question, Julie, um, for the six IASB candidates, are they all available July first? Do we know? They are available July first. Excellent, okay? That's good to know. That'll definitely help with calendar. Um. Okay. Um. Okay. Um, any thoughts on, 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 uh, calendar timeline? Do we want to agree to a set date? Do we not want to, uh, do we want to leave it up in the air as far as what dates to, uh, possibly meet? Um, I mean, what, what are you guys' thoughts? I think Kelly proposed Wednesdays, but doesn't necessarily mean they have to have Wednesdays. Um, we could have Tuesdays, we could have whatever.
Oh. My, my schedule, it's changing at times. When I'm looking at what we already had pre-set up, we had Monday the tenth, Monday the seventeenth, and then we have our normal monthly board meeting, Wednesday the nineteenth. So we're already booked, three days in June, however, one of those was a policy committee. But this is kind of against certain states.
Not, not the nineteenth. Nineteenth is a further holiday.
Oh.
That, that meeting.
It's a reoccurring thing on my calendar, and you're right. I did have it, um.
We push it up.
It is, it is.
Oh, Julie, you got it. You're doing the dates. Yes. Yes, the tenth was a policy committee meeting.
Need to change.
The, the, uh, the amended budget, right? The amended budget was the seventeenth.
That's why.
Um, that's a quick one. We just have to, because of the thirty-day requirement, unfortunately. So it's gonna be a quick, less than five-minute meeting, I think, potentially, um, and then normal meeting on the twelfth.
We want to schedule something for next week to try to, uh, just keep the progress. Eric, um, Eric, I think one of the additional things that we discussed last month, or last week, sorry, um, was the firm that we used to find Mark. Were, were you gonna look back at that contract, or is that not, was that not a good experience with that firm? I don't know.
Um, not sure if it was a bad or good experience. I mean, it was, uh, I wouldn't say it was, you know, either one. Um, right, uh, I did get, um, Jen Redell, who was the president at the time of the last, last search, she did send me a detailed listing of firms that were used for the permanents. So let me get that list to the board. Not sure where it's at. Um. Yeah. I know Dr. White's firm was not included in that because his firm did not exist back then. Um, so I will get that to the board as far as what firms were used as, uh, um, but those would be permanent searches. I don't think those firms did any interim searches. Um, I think IASB is one of the unique ones that does interims, just because they have access to so many, you know, with their association. Um, I think Don White's firm, I think it's more of a, you know, they focus on the full-time searches, but they just, as an accommodation, would do the interim searches on that front, so.
Yeah, so I think it's not just search for, helping with Y A. So, and that.
That firm that you just mentioned is the one that Yorktown, York, York, the. That firm that you just mentioned is the one that Yorktown, York, York, uh, used to get theirs. And they were really happy with the two gentlemen that served as their, um, co-interims. They're just, uh, they just now hired their permanent and the feedback was really good on the firm and the, um, and those two gentlemen that, that took that job. So, um, I, so if we, should we have like a goal of when, you know, if, if we're maybe trying to get these interviews scheduled, could we do it like, say, we're going to try to do interviews on the, either the tenth or the twelfth, and then maybe meet again next week, figure out who's going to be contacted for interviews? And then it'll give us a week to, uh, schedule the interviews the week of the tenth? And then, you know, hopefully place somebody, make a decision?
Certainly can. Um, I, I'm hoping that, you know, we just, uh, when we discuss these candidates in closed session, that we might be able to start setting up interviews as early as next week. I don't think we need necessarily need to wait any longer. If we, if we see some of these candidates that we like, why, why wait? Why wait till, you know?
Yeah. So, so should we schedule a meeting now for next week to, to be able to start interviewing then? Um, you know, I personally like the idea of having a candidate pool of, you know, maybe intra, or maybe internal and external and just look at, look at all avenues, compare costs. Um, and, uh, and yeah, I mean, it looks like we have, just glancing at these, these, uh, candidates here, some good, good options potentially. I don't know.
So, uh, all right, so next week, is anyone, what, what are people's thoughts?
I will be out of town Wednesday through Friday, but I could make Monday night work.
I'm actually out of state, uh, second through the ninth, so I will do my best to attend, but, uh, so it looks like Monday, the third? No, okay, the third, okay.
No, Thursday. We're already having a situation where people are out of there. And this is not a, that's what it's fraught with, not providing them. So we already have a few people that are out of there, but it's responsible. And we're all ready together to evolve. I don't know if this, this has a lot to do with that, but we're also booked for Monday. I would say we can do one at the top up to start that process and use before, either get candidates together or to look at potential interview situations. Um, but in all fairness, if two people out of seven can't be here, that's not fair to you. That's my thought.
May I make a suggestion? In some conversation with Kelly, I tried to back map from June thirtieth backwards in order to make sure that there's somebody in place on July first. Um, you have the regularly scheduled meeting, or so we already have a meeting on the schedule for the seventeenth. Um, that meeting is to approve the tentative budget. There's a scenario, you know, you could envision a scenario where on the seventeenth, you could add the approval of an interim superintendent to that contract, to that meeting, uh, an agenda item worked backwards from there. Um, the tenth uh, would be a good night to do interviews. The twelfth does have a lot. I mean, unless the board would like to skip some of the other presentations from that night. We, uh, typically would schedule the, um, strategic plan review and our school improvement plan presentations for this meeting. Those could be tabled. Um, but the tenth or the twelfth would work for interviews. What would be ideal would be if coming up in the near future, a list of candidates could be developed and screened, at least for the interview process. That's really where the task of the board right now. Um, the sooner that list could be developed and that's discussion could start in, in closed session tonight. And we couldn't certainly add candidates to that list if we get any more information in the coming days. But in an ideal world, an interview process on the tenth or the twelfth would allow the board to hire an interim superintendent by the seventeenth. That two weeks then between then and the end of June, notwithstanding any vacation to personal travel, give that person opportunity to come in, do the onboarding paperwork, and all those other things that are required, um, for a start date of July one. It'll be a little tighter timeline, but you could go, you have a meeting the last week in June. I do know that that's usually pretty much a dead week for most of the administrative team around here, uh, including me, just by a simple need to approve, you could do on the seventeenth, the amended budget and go with approval, go right into closed session for the interview candidates. Yeah, the, the meeting in the week of the twenty-fourth, provided you guys meet on the seventeenth, the interview's on the seventeenth, you could have a special meeting anytime later that week to hire the superintendent or the next week. But the idea would be, uh, to try and have a candidate in place by July one. Happy to assist in that process in any way I can, but, uh, making sure we give ourselves enough runway to do the HR side of things, to have that person ready. You know, if we can make next week work, I understand, but also next week is not mission critical necessarily. The hiring will just be the screening process. And some of that information just be collected via email at the pool of candidates where it could be, uh, be determined.
I like that. I, I think that's good. You know, we, 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 I mean, I don't know how many candidates we're talking about, but realistically, what we're saying, I think, is that the goal would be to interview, I'm assuming a minimum of three people, maybe four on the tenth. And if something happens, our backup plan is to do that work on the seventeenth and either put it for board approval on the seventeenth, or the backup plan would be the twenty-fourth. Is that right?
I mean, I, the twenty-fourth would be, I mean, if we're gonna, twenty, Monday, the twenty-fourth is quick. Like the first, get fingerprinted and go to. It, no. No. They have to make an appointment, they have to be fingerprinted, they have to go to, uh, register their license in Will County. It takes some time.
And all its fingerprinting has happened, no matter if they're a charitable dependent or, or not, they still have to.
That is correct.
Yep. So, so I think we need to start on the tenth, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna be realistic, if we're gonna have three to four candidates that we're gonna interview, no way you could do three to four interviews on the tenth. That's doing an hour interview each, and that's four hours. I don't think that's really feasible. Um, at least to do a thorough interview, I think you need a lot more than an hour, uh, to do that. So I think you, you're gonna be looking at doing interviews the tenth and the eleventh possibly. Regular meeting on the twelfth, possible action on the seventeenth. Very quick, but that, that's, I think, what we gotta.
If we go back to land next week, did we rule out, I mean, Eric, if you can participate remotely, did we rule out, um, the fifth, sixth, and seventh?
So I will be out of town for work the fifth, sixth, and seventh. Um, and I don't know, are we allowed to do this remotely anyway when it comes to this stuff?
So a public body can set its own rules as far, as far as discussion is concerned. You have to meet a series of criteria if you were to take a public vote and take action. I don't think you, I mean, I don't think screening a process in terms of who you bring in for an interview is not an action. The actual hiring would be. Uh, so you could not do a roll call vote, you could not take action on anything remotely. But I think just listening to the conversation and giving your two cents in a closed session manner would be acceptable.
I mean, I, I could potentially make a work coming, I'll be Eastern Standard Time, so I'll be an hour ahead, but, um, it needed, but I, I, I think we go with the tenth and the eleventh. Um, especially since we don't have any, uh, any potential candidates yet from, from Dr. White, um, that we might need to bet. Um, that gives Dr. White some time to produce some potential candidates. Because if he's got, you know, a bench, just like IASB has a bench of, of people, then, then that's, that goes that week of the, the third. Yeah, I'll have access to, you know, where I'm at in internet. So, I don't know, that'd be my thoughts is ten, eleven. Try to get three, maybe four candidates in here, two hour, two hour interview each. Regular board meeting on the twelfth. And then, yeah, if all goes well, potentially using that seventeenth, but with that in mind, not, you know, if we're not ready on the seventeenth, then we're not ready. But on June eleventh, I'm not available, but we could possibly do that Thursday, the thirteenth, if we're trying to put in three meetings that week. I don't know if Thursday works, Friday.
My mom is having surgery on the thirteenth, and I have to go to Michigan for that. So I am not available that day.
If we were to go with next week and Eric could somehow pull off doing remotely on the fourth, since that's when everybody else is available, what time would we be talking doing that? Okay. Making sure it's not my fault. Mm-hmm. Sure. Sure. Well, I can make tenth, eleventh, and seventeenth work.
Which day do you think you can, can make work through? Third? I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's just my thoughts that in our interview is not very strategic, but I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm just one person. So if we think we could sneak in an hour and a half, then you can, can we can get three candidates in, four and a half hours? That, that's around, I don't know. I just think that we're gonna do a thorough interview. An hour is not really that much, but.
Depending on how many candidates we want to go through, there should be a two-step process. If we're stuck with an hour and a half, that's fine. Filtered down, give me a final, give me a final filter through again. Make sure, hey, this is really for people that are, that's interested of these kids. Uh, an hour and just the one time interview process, my thinking, my good.
Arguably, we could do the tenth and/or the eleventh then to do quick interviews and then bring them back for second interviews, the top three or something like that on the seventeenth? Or is that getting it too close?
Oh, you're really good. First round, quick interviews, Monday, Tuesday. Be better normal, please, Wednesday, and then add the final three on Thursday, the thirteenth, if you really want to push it. That's right, that's right. Now, thirteen, or the eleventh, I don't know, city, okay. And when you get there? I'm not pushing.
Right, depends on the surgery, right? Depends on the surgery, recovery, all, there's probably a lot of therapy.
That's, that's what I'm saying, the following. And that's what I've. So that Monday, the seventh, you would.
And how long do you think it takes to onboard? We made a decision.
Two weeks in a hurry. We have, we have to wait for fingerprint results to come back. We are, you don't have control of that. Uh, summertime, sometimes they get delayed. The closer you get to the beginning of school year, the more it gets delayed is where people are going to the ROE to get their fingerprint done.
So. So, so it's looking like we're not gonna have someone in place on July first, maybe shortly thereafter, but probably not on July first, if we got two weeks.
Well, it is a holiday week, the fourth of July, so we're not opening school, we don't have summer school. It's not, it's not, I mean, I could have been on vacation on that week too, uh, but probably the sooner the better. Um, in terms of the length of the interview, um, one of my consideration, recommendations for consideration is what do you want the interview to look like? List of interview questions, et cetera. Um, it has been my experience that no single interview takes more than one hour. Even so, even if we were to have two rounds, no single interview. Otherwise, you could probably create a list of twenty-five questions and then probably get through them in about an hour. Now, in the case of hiring somebody like, uh, you know, a cabinet administrator, you would, you might have multiple rounds. You might, where you do pare it down, but usually an hour is about all you need. Uh, I already have two hours. Uh, I've never, I've never been a part of one of those before.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have some candidates potentially to interview as of today. So, and we still have, you know, tomorrow and Friday. I think we could schedule some interviews for next week and, and maybe well, if we do remote, huh?
That means the week after, the week of the tenth?
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we can get this done so that we have somebody in place by, by July first. I, I think that, you know, we should try to do what we can to have somebody in place by July.
I would agree, but with, with them saying that it could take two weeks to July fourth through the holidays, it might be more realistic to try to shoot for that Monday, July eighth, potentially, knowing that we're gonna go without a superintendent for a week, the week of, you know, holiday, you know, no, the district office is closed on that Friday. It's a holiday on the fourth, first, second, and third, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, probably not a lot going on. So, you know, um, if we can decide on the seventeenth, it might be more realistic to think that, you know, the eighth might, might be more doable, since it's not really gonna do that much. Uh, who thinks that a lot of stuff's gonna happen on July first, second, and third? But I don't think, I don't know. But, I mean, I'd love to have it July first too, but maybe July eighth is a little more realistic. On that front, but, um, so, yeah, we do. I mean, if these six, seven, eight, nine don't, don't pan out, then yeah. July, doesn't matter. So, all right, all right, so I think we got an idea. We're gonna try to shoot for interviews, one hour interviews on the tenth. We'll see how many, three to four potentially, maybe even only two make it, I don't know, out of this, you know, what we're doing. And then the thought is that we have the meeting on the seventeenth as an option to take action if we be, already scheduled. So, um, so we will table the policy committee on the tenth for interviews instead, and then see where it takes us, ten, seventeen, and go from there.
Maybe if, if need be, we could potentially do an interview on the twelfth before the board meeting, maybe. Right? Too much?
Can I just ask a newbie dumb question possibly? Um, if we were to go the route of an external interim or permanent, that would require a fingerprint. But if we wind up going a route of if there's anyone interested internally, they would not need to be fingerprinted then? Or they would? That's what I thought, okay.
The only, you know, the only timing crunch there would be by filling one vacancy, you create another. And so it'd be, you know, at some point, there's, there will be an end of the line to that, that would, uh, so be dealt. But not all of our mission for the one, one.
Whoever, if, if we decided, if, if, if we decided to go the inner, uh, internal route, right? That person's position would technically be open, and you have the board that position open. Actually, if you look for that, then you could see how, you know, potentially another internal candidate could take that. And then all of a sudden that goes out, and it's just a domino of all the way down to where, you know, we could be looking for a teacher, you know, potentially, if everyone kind of steps up and moves up, it could end of July, early August, be struggling to find a teacher. Just because of the way, of the fall, the opening, the, you know, trying to get candidates for that, that's a lot of pressure internally as well, as far as trying to get all those interviews scheduled. But when somebody moves, fingerprinting goes away, but then, uh, get other issues. All right, so are we good? Ten, ten, and seventeen are kind of our tentative, uh, dates. Try to get some interviews in, and then we have seventeenth as a, as a placeholder. If we need it done. It could. Twenty-fourth, Monday? Protection. Protection? Um, what, I don't know. Well, if we're gonna go with three to four candidates, we gotta go 6 to 7, 7 to 8, 8 to, um, 8 to 9, 9 to 10, I think, would be my guess. I mean, I, I don't know if we, 2 to 8, 5 to 8, or 5 to 8, I have no question. I do want to be here on those Mondays, 5 to 5. Or some people drive, and so, not. We've got a possibility. All right. We're good? Anything else on the search? No? I move the Board of Education adjourned to closed session for purposes of the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to Local Governance Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed, shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Any discussion? Kathy, please call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost? Mrs. Tunny? Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, everyone.